Call to order the meeting in Monday, September the 28th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos.
Present.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of September the 14th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This minutes will stand as submitted. We have three public hearings this evening. If the clerk would please read the first one. In fact, I think basically we can take one and two together. They're really about the same thing.
Separate.
Oh, you want to keep them separate? Okay.
Yeah, separate.
One.
To hear public comments on establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation act district for the property at 802 Military Street. Following the hearing, council will consider a resolution to establish the district.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number one closed. Are you also, as part of that, have a resolution? Is there a motion to establish the district?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there any discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Move on to public hearing number two.
To hear public comments on the application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 802 Military Street for six years. Following the hearing, council will consider a resolution to approve the application.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Yes, you can come forward. On public hearing number two.
Mayor Rep, I would just like a small explanation.
We will get to that after we've opened, you know, the public hearing is done. So is there anyone who has any comments on public hearing number two? Seeing no one, I will declare public hearing number two closed and ask for a motion to consider the resolution to approve the application.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford. In response to that and also the rest of the audience, could we have an explanation of exactly what the certificate entails?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. The establishment of an Oprah district and then the creation for a certificate that would be sent into the state would allow for the City Flats project to go forward. The Oprah district is a tool that is used to help bring in investments and to hopefully bring all of those investments in at one time. Rather than in some of these larger projects, they may have a tendency to stage them. This will provide a little over $7 million of investment in the old, what we refer to as the Michigan National Building. It should bring somewhere between 30 and 40 full-time equivalent jobs to the project and to our community. And it will provide, of course, the related construction jobs during the renovations. So we're looking forward to this project and hope that things will be in place shortly.
Thank you. Is there anyone on council who has any questions for Kim?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I guess, I guess my comment and questions is, you know, I think some of these things have kind of been over-publicized or over-theorized. You know, we're guaranteeing this, this organization six years of reduced tax, taxes for them to bring their business to Port Huron and establish a business. I guess my biggest question is, is what are we going to get in return? Is there some kind of guarantee that we're going to see some progress? Do they have, do they have a timeline to move this thing along? We've heard numerous stories in the last few years, and it started downtown and now it's migrated to the south end of town. And I think till we answer these questions, I just, I just can't move in the affirmative until we see it. Something definite for the citizens of Port Huron, and this doesn't answer that.
Councilman Harris.
Mayor President.
Yes. Go ahead.
The way this district works is, they do not see any tax relief unless they actually improve the property. And so we are not fronting money or providing tax credits. This is a tax abatement for the improvements they do. So there are those safeguards and guarantees that the people of Port Huron are not putting something out there without anything in return.
It's only a tool used as incentive to induce that.
Exactly.
It's just only a tool used as incentive to induce that on behalf of the city.
We are not actually giving them anything until they actually do the improvements, and then they would see the tax relief.
So the, the question, I guess, is to you, is the fact that, okay, the six-year tax abatement would not start until the project's completed, correct?
I can't handle that one.
Under the state regulations, they have two years to make the improvements. The clock starts ticking once the state approves the Oprah. So if, for an example, they wanted to take 10 years to do those improvements, they wouldn't realize any advantage at all because the clock started ticking and they did not make those improvements right away. So it's an incentive to them, but we do have some control, and it's, it's not only an incentive financially, but also on a timeframe basis as well. Because they're losing that advantage if they don't do anything with it.
That's our, that's our guarantee.
Uh, that's our, that's our carrot and stick, if you will. Yes.
And they plan on starting as soon as it's approved, is that correct?
As soon as they can get everything in order, obviously, on a project this size, as you're aware of, there are several other aspects to it. Some are not within the control of the city, but this is one of our tools that we offer, and we're happy to move that forward so that they can get everything else in place.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Public hearing number three.
To hear comments on code case 15-003 located at 2624 15th Avenue. Following the hearing, council will consider the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number three? Seeing no one, I will declare public hearing number three closed and ask for a motion for immediate demolition.
I move for immediate demolition.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Or do you have a presentation, Kim, that you'd like to show, or? I'm trying to make you work hard on your last name. I don't want you to just drift out of here.
No. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Property at 15th Avenue, a little bit unique in that it is gone through a tax foreclosure process, and we had already started the code case process for demolition. So obviously, we've received no response, although great cooperation through the county, we've received no response from the previous owner. And the property itself is on a non-buildable lot. Our intention would be, if council gives us approval, to go ahead with the demolition, and then we would look at splitting that lot between the two adjacent property owners.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second, so if there's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on. Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please come forward to the podium and give us your name, and you'd have four minutes.
God, I hope I don't spend four minutes up here. My name is Mark Peltier. I moved to Port Huron last year. I've been active with the city of Port Huron and different things for quite some time. I used to be with the Red Cross. I also helped with the development of your first website for the Capture webpage. That dates back, I think, 10 or 11 years now, even longer than that. I recently moved to the city of Port Huron because of my love for the city. I moved from out in Lakeport to the city, and I also moved my parents in with me to take care of them as they are in their retirement age. I received a building inspection division paperwork saying that I'm violating regulations, which was a surprise to me because ever since I bought the property, all I've been doing is tirelessly working on it to make it look better than when I bought it. I subsequently found out after receiving this complaint that both neighbors received a similar complaint from the building inspecting division stating that basically vehicles are parked in the front yard, and then also in here says that I was building on concrete to, for my driveway, both which, for the most part, were not true. When I contacted John Schmidt, whose name is on the letter, John knew nothing, absolutely nothing about this. He says, "What? I don't know anything about this." I said, "Sir, your, your signature's on it." "Oh," he says, "I have other people to do that work for me." I said, "Well, it's troubling to me because, you know, I'm, I'm active in the community. I just bought the house. I've been doing everything possible to make the house look better. I'm getting along great with the two neighbors beside me. We all like each other." But we all got the same complaint at the same time. One neighbor didn't want to come tonight, and the other one, I asked him not to come because he wasn't sure he could hold his temper. So I said, "Well, let me go in his, in his stead." I said, "I'll explain to you." My two neighbors have a little bit different circumstance. They have driveways that have had a, an add-on to the driveway that is like 35 or 45 years old. They parked on these spots for a long time. My one neighbor has one of the extension that goes one way. My neighbor has another one that his car parks that way. You can tell by the age of it, it's been there for eons. Me, myself, in this letter, said that I'm pouring concrete to build onto my driveway, which isn't true. I'm actually pouring concrete to keep water from going in the basement against my house. So if I was parking there, I'd be parking in my basement. It's some, I, when I asked him, "Where are these complaints coming from?" He says, "Oh, they're anonymous. They're anonymous." I said, "Okay, but where is the credence behind them? Before you send out a letter saying I'm, you know, taking away from the beauty of the, the city, who is looking at this?" He says, "Well, I'll come out because it gave me a deadline of the 14th to pull a permit for the concrete apparently that was building on for my driveway that doesn't exist. I'm not doing that." He says, "I'll come out on September 14th." I gave him my cellphone number. He says, "I'll call you. I'll call you. Don't worry about it. I'll call you." September 15th rolled around, and I called back to John Schmidt, and I said, "John, this is Mark Peltier. I called you. Or, we had a conversation." He says, "Who am I talking to? I don't, who am I talk?" I said, "Sir, we just had a discussion last week." Says, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot. I forgot." I said, "Well, you know, for you, it might be nothing." But I said, "For me, I, I'd like to know. If I'm doing something wrong, I want to know about it and fix it before it becomes an issue, before I get fined." He says, "Well, I'll check it out, and I'll let you know. If you don't hear from me, I'll just close it out, and that'll be it."
I don't mean to cut you off, but you do, you are at the end of the four minutes.
Okay.
But, but, no, don't walk away. I, Mr. Freed has been, our city manager's been writing down notes on this.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard about it.
Yes, so he definitely will follow up on it tomorrow.
All three neighbors, we've just been stonewalled by it, and when we...
Your address, one more time.
Your address, please.
2840 Monticello. And it's neighbors on both sides of me that got the similar letters, and we're bewildered by it. We're great neighbors. We love, you know, we get along, we help each other out. I mean, there's no basis behind it. I'm just trying to figure out, number one, what am I paying for?
Yeah.
You know, and number two is, maybe we should revise this policy of sending out these threat letters. I think this is a bad idea. This is a deterrent for people to move into the city. Like, that's all I've got.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, Mr. Freed. We'll get back with you, I'm sure, tomorrow, correct? Do you have a listed telephone number? I don't want you to give it over the...
Yeah.
Yeah, if you just slip it to him afterwards, and then he'll get in touch with you, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Yes. Donna.
My name is Donna Kloon, Port Huron. I'm here with an issue concerning a health hazard and concerning destruction of my property. Last summer, I spent over $700 to make repairs on my porch and paint it professionally. I may as well have put that money in a pile and lit a match to it. A once-improved section of my house is stained with rodent urine and feces. The steps going up to my porch are gnawed. I've lost two windows, and I've lost the landscaping that I paid over $60 for this The reason for this, and I've already had a conversation concerning it, and I'm hoping that consensus can get together and find a solution because I don't think I deserve to have my property damaged. And if you've never got up in the morning and had urine and feces all over your porch, you don't know what disgust is like, and this is a continuum. The reason this is happening is because of my neighbor. He, they, I should say, have taken to domesticating the local squirrels. And I know you're thinking, "Big deal, squirrels." Well, squirrels are classified in the same category as rats. They're rodents. They carry 36 different diseases, the most infamous being rabies. And I don't think you want anybody to go through the rabies series. They're tamed, they're hand-fed, they've trained them to come up onto their enclosed porch, which is why they're doing it with the other houses in the area. And I, I can't see a resolution to this. I am no longer going to improve my property. These people that have moved next door have cost me close to $3,000 in defense of living, which is what I personally titled it. Indigenous animals are there for a reason. There is a food source, and once you change the food source, you change their behavior. Many, many places from coast to coast say, "Do not feed the animals," and they say that for a reason. In the West, many people, well, not many, but some people are mauled and injured by bears simply because they want people food. The secondary issue with this concerning health is the birds. After the squirrels eat whatever they're eating, the birds come down, and it looks like Alfred Hitchcock's iconic movie, The Birds. And I don't know if you've ever heard of the swine flu, but in the southwest, a woman recently died from it. This is a large health issue, and I'm hoping that in one of your closed sessions, you can get together and try to find a way to curtail this.
Your time is just about up, so...
All right. Well, what the bottom line is, it's a problem that needs to be solved for my sake, for my, my home, because it's being slowly destroyed, and for the health of the neighborhood. And I would appreciate your concern and some kind of solution in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? They'd like to come forward and give us their name. They have four minutes. Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment closed. We'll move on to, from the city manager, number one, please.
Accepting the bid from S.A. Terrello demolition in the amount of $19,700 for concrete and bituminous removals at the southwest corner of 10th Street and Water Street, with funding being used from CDBG funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion? What exactly is it that we're going to be doing there on the corner after it's removed? See, I am keeping you busy.
Dear councilmembers, this project, I'd like to thank the engineering department for putting it together for us. We have been waiting for some time and, to acquire the second parcel that was available to the city. And once we acquired that, as you can see, it doesn't look very pretty, we had then also torn a home down that was sitting next to it. So then, after all of the land had been cleared and assembled, now it's time to pull up the concrete. We've removed the fence, and again, thank you to the engineering and DPW department for taking care of that. We'll remove the concrete barricades, and then the bid includes a landscape burn, and then we will probably not till next spring, install a neighborhood sign. This is one of two signs that we had planned when we started the Harrison Point project a couple of years back, and we were just waiting for all the pieces to fit in, for the money to come through for CDBG, for the land to be acquired, and for the other home to be torn down. So look forward to getting it started.
It certainly will be an improvement. I've driven by there.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Harris.
I'd just like to commend Kim for, for getting after this. This is one of those projects that seemed to have gotten away. I don't know how long Yarker Cash Register's been out of there, but they left a partially demolished site there, and it's been like that for, for a number of years, and it's, I know that the residents and anybody coming to the city of Port Huron will be glad to see that corner cleaned up, so thank you.
We were happy to see the property finally come through the county's task foreclosure sale, so...
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember...
Kim, is there going to be any benches or anything there?
Well, that's a really great idea. I wish I could take credit for that.
I read Roger Bibby going to take care of the bully squirrels in that neighborhood.
Sitting on the bench?
Company that could put a couple benches there.
Yeah. Good idea.
See what we can do.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor, one of the things I did, I did note beforehand is, this is some prime choice real estate in town, and so it would be nice if we could look at some plans that had both some signage for the Harrison Point neighborhood, but also find some way in the future to put that back in the tax rules. It's a pretty good frontage, street frontage. I think it's 113 feet of street frontage.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's quite a, quite a corner there. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Number two.
Accepting the proposal from, from Clemis in the amount of $8,000 to upgrade services on the LiveScan fingerprint cabinet booking system, with funding being used from a joint St. Clair County Port Huron Urban Area Security Initiative grant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Yes, if the chief could elaborate on this new update.
I was going to let Mrs. Harmon speak.
She, she... You should have given it to, everything to her tonight.
Yeah, she's working on her park bench, so you let her sit down.
Okay, let me tell you about LiveScan. LiveScan is an electronic device to fingerprint people. And we used to do, and sometimes still do, the old rolling of the hands with blanking, but that is long gone, and everything is now transmitted electronically. And we're required to take a number of fingerprints, and not just for criminals. We do adoption, we do employment, we do sex offenders, we do some job employment fields, we do CPS referrals. So there's a lot of different fingerprints that we're, we have to take. We're mandated by the state to use certain protocols in order to submit those fingerprints. We have not been able to meet those protocols for the last few years because our LiveScan equipment was out of date. Two years ago, I knew that this was going on, so when we didn't have any budget money, I called a friend in the state police and borrowed a LiveScan from a post that was closing in Ypsilanti to get us through so we didn't have to spend the money. And that got us through to two years. And then this year, I wrote a grant for this city, along with the rest of the police agencies in St. Clair County, to obtain U.S.C. money to upgrade the LiveScan system so it'll be no cost to the taxpayers. The only problem was, I had the only LiveScan in Port Huron that wasn't able to be upgraded. So I traded our LiveScan to Clemis for an upgradable one that, so I can utilize the grant money. Long story short, this is all paid for by grant money. It's no cost to the taxpayers, and then we'll be compliant with Michigan law.
I like your strategy to get there. Didn't cost, not that the fact it just didn't cost us anything, but it seems like it wasn't a want, just a want. It was mandated.
Were mandated.
Based on the job that you do. Yeah, great job. Congratulations on that grant.
Anyone else have any comments? Well, thanks for being diligent.
Okay.
Take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item three, please.
Accepting the proposal from Dell Premier in the amount of $22,014.72 for eight in-card laptop computers for use by the police department, with 50% funding being used from drugs and OWI forfeiture funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, could we have the chief come back up and give us some data points here?
Good.
Kim's pain tonight.
Well, I was trying to get over her record.
One of the things that was brought to my attention when I came to the city almost five years ago was the severe lack of technology within the police department. And I've been working with IT Director Brennan to upgrade the technology within the police department, and slowly but surely, over the last five years, we've been taking it piece by piece and changing the technology in the police department. One of those, one of the biggest last steps was the bringing on of Clemis, a consortium of courts, law enforcement, management, information systems that brings this in line with 171 other police agencies in seven different counties surrounding metropolitan Detroit to use technology. The technology that Clemis brings is not available on your usual laptop computer. They run a number of specialized software components. As an example, just one would be a lean channel that has to have a MySiegen portal in order to access the lean database and criminal histories. Another one is that LiveScan. With our membership with Clemis, we have what's called BlueCheck, which is a handheld LiveScan. It's about the size of a phone. We can take two fingerprints, put it on the Live, on that little phone, and then the picture of the person those fingerprints belong to pulls up on the computer. It also runs citations and all kinds of different databases that we utilize. Clemis mandates which computer that they allow on their system after they do months and months and months of testing to make sure that it'll handle all the applications that it runs. Clemis is, and that's done by an advisory board, which I sit on. Clemis has chosen this Dell to replace the Panasonic ToughBooks of the past years. So all departments in Clemis, when their computers in the cars start wearing out, will have to migrate to this chosen one. Now, we have some computers in the cars that are still running 2007, and, and IT has done a phenomenal job in, in keeping these, these old dogs running and, and keeping them operating, but candidly, we, they can't be upgraded any further, and it's time to upgrade the technology. And if you think about it yourself, technology we had in 2007 versus what we have today is, you know...
Obsolete.
Technology after three years is obsolete. James won't take, keep technology anything over 90 days.
Is this James?
Yeah, he's a, he's a techno guy. So what we're doing is that we need to change eight of the car computers out, and we're going to do this on, on a progression scale as we turn the cars over and as computers are needed. And in, this wasn't a budget item, but I've been able to pay for a portion of it out of our drug forfeiture and OWI reimbursement. I like utilizing that tool. It basically makes the bad guys pay for the technology that I'm going to use to rearrest[1739.86] them or other bad guys. So I'm all in favor of that.
Okay. And what's, you said 50%. What's our share? Is that just half of...
Half of that, and the other half's going to be funded through IT.
IT, oh, okay. So what you just explained to us is that, under Clemis, these new technologies, they speak to each other?
Yes. All the applications that run on this PC speak to each other and don't interfere with each other.
Okay, so it's an integrated kind of a functioning...
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay, I like that.
Anyone else have questions for the chief? I think you've about answered it all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Move on to resolutions. Number one, please.
Approving the agreement with the Port Huron Neighborhood Housing Corporation to prepare documents and hold bid openings for new construction, rehab, and demolition projects.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item two.
Confirming and approving a single lot special assessment for the cost of an emergency board-up of a vacant structure at 2412 Ninth Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Move on to ordinances.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 52 zoning of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of making various changes to the ordinance.
I think everybody has in front of them too a change that was just adding an or, taking an and out and making it an or, just noting it was not there on the first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion? Could we...
Okay.
Ladies first.
Oh, that's sweet of you.
Councilmember Ashford?
But I was just going to ask for some clarification as to what prompt is that may follow into what you may want to ask. You get an explanation first, and then we know where we go on with this.
Kim's term of end.
Is there a price?
Yeah. You get to retire.
It's called retirement.
It's going.
No refunds, no exchanges. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Yes, the zoning ordinance, most of it are, they're housekeeping issues. We have been trying to actually wait until we could update the master plan. It's due for an update. And unfortunately, we just haven't been able to get through the master plan update process. And there were some individuals, I think you'll remember, there was a gentleman that wanted to operate a car business, and the ordinance, the special use permit we had to give to him was contingent upon some other changes. We had some other questions that have come up in the last few months. We just didn't want to make our clients, which are really the citizens or the investors, wait any longer for a master plan update in order to bring back zoning ordinance changes. So we tried to go through and hit the items that we had either made notes ourselves that we've been working with, definitions that we needed to clarify. We knew what they meant, but every once in a while, someone will come up with a new idea, and then we have a hard time deciding whether it fits in or not to that category. Or things that we very specifically wanted to approve and had to tell the individual that they needed to wait or it needed to be contingent upon this type of change.
Okay, was there anything outstanding?
Outstanding?
I mean, that was really pressing, that's the driver of this?
One would have been with regards to defining automobile repair service. That helped the gentleman that needed to have that in place. The other one, I guess, was clarifying boarding houses and rooming houses. We've struggled with that in the past. A rooming house is when I live there and I now want to rent a room out versus the boarding house. I don't live there, and yet I want to rent separate rooms. It used to be that you could rent up to 10 rooms in a boarding house. We felt that that was not prudent, that it really should be four rooms. And also to clarify how many bathrooms are required for each sleeping room. We went through and changed, or added, if you will, again, on the definitions. We've had some requests with regards to, not really a carport, but a metal canopy that would be set in a foundation but would not have all three sides. So it would be a carport. In our previous definition, we talked about it as far as a tent or a canopy not being allowed, but we really didn't say anything about these metal buildings. So that type of thing.
Okay.
I could, right off the bat, probably one of the first things that was a question that I had on that is the fact that some of these aluminum garage-type things, or lean twos, whatever they call them, that are factory-made specifically for that type of thing, and now we're telling the people that they aren't to be used for a garage on the side, but you can have them in your backyard. I just have a problem with telling people to put stuff in their backyard. Couple of the other rules, and maybe if you've got your documents right there, Article 52-677?
Six, I'm sorry, 677 or 677?
677.
Okay.
52-677 for parking and storage of campers, travel trailers, et cetera. On item number three down there, it's got the changes in red, but then it's got a line through them. Does that mean that it was put in there and dropped?
Yes, it was put in there. It's always been in there. It was put in in red by mistake, and so it needed to be brought back out again.
So it's in, but it's out now.
Yes, sir. And we also had to clarify, we said campers and travel trailers. Again, we would get the question, what about my boat? What about my motorhome? To me, they were all the same, but they're not if you own one, so...
I guess the only reason I brought that up is we had an issue here not too long ago with the place on Chestnut Street that had a situation that this would address. And then the other one that we had up here that we had issue come before council about the kennel that's on, what is that, Fourth Street?
Yes.
Down there.
Now, this does not change that situation, because that was in a central business district. So we did not change the allowance of a kennel in a central business district. But it did further define kennel, and also the difference between kennel, pet grooming, and animal shelter, because we did not have a definition for animal shelter that was adequate.
And I guess finally, it's just the idea that, you know, we have a tough time getting compliance now and stuff, and some of the things we've put on auto repair and stuff as far as a six-foot fence and things like that, and how many hours they can keep them outside the fence. I don't know if we need to get any stricter. I think we have to enforce what we got. And lastly, but not least, I guess, you know, the gentleman got up here and told us some problems he's having up on Monticello Avenue, but then I looked at this here under the definitions, and one of the definitions here, it says that the building inspector shall have the power to interpret this definition and determine whether or not a structure shall be approved as an accessory building. I personally have a problem. We have let one person make a decision what is and what isn't, you know. Right now, I think the problem that some of it we have in the city of Port Hauron is I think we've got good blight inspectors, but their definition of blight is that far apart. So I guess it's hard to get to that one defined thing, but when we give them latitude, I just can't vote for this ordinance change, so, and those, I guess, are my reasons. And I appreciate what you're doing, but they just don't fit what we're doing right now for me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
That concludes our agenda. One announcement, the annual cops and jocks spaghetti dinner will be held October the 13th at the Seaway Terminal. It starts at what time?
Starts at 4 o'clock. Same poor service, same great food.
Poor service, great food. Make sure you go. And then also, as we've been kind of kidding around tonight about Kim's last meeting, but it is her last meeting, she is retiring after...
Oh, 32-plus.
32-plus years. So you're to be congratulated for all the time you've spent and dedication. And do you want to say anything?
Her last walk to the podium.
Yeah, make your last walk, yes.
Good, doesn't it? No, thank you. I would just briefly, first, I would like to start off by thanking the community. Great people, great place, everyone working together. I'd like to next thank each and every single one of you, councilmembers, for your support, for the programs that we bring to you, the problems that we bring to you, the solutions or the ideas. You've always listened, listened carefully, offered up your advice, your expertise from all of your walks of life and your contacts, and I want to thank you for that. I've always felt that it was given in kindness, friendship, and a mutually shared goal to improve the community. I'd like to thank James Freed, the city manager, for his kindness to me and for allowing me to run with, you know, some of those ideas. I would like to thank, of course, and I would be remiss if I didn't, but the great staff, my coworkers. You know, I can't say enough about, without getting too emotional, but this is my hometown. I was born and raised here. My family's lived here for over 100 and some odd years. I was the first one in my family to go to college, and I'd like to thank my parents for that opportunity. They really showed me the way. And then to be able to get that college degree and come back to your hometown and use the degree and work in the community, it doesn't get any better than that. To be surrounded by friends and family, coworkers, councilmembers, investors, individuals that really do care. We've had differences of opinions in different ways of going about it, but always the same goal. And it's been wonderful. I've just felt privileged and blessed my entire life. I started off when I was 15, working in the rec department, so thank you very much for that. It was a wonderful experience, and it just keeps getting better. So I wish all of you well in the future. I wish the community well. I'm excited for some of the wonderful things that are heading your way. I'm excited to see David Haynes take over the reins. He's got some terrific ideas, and he has a lot more energy. So it's a good thing for this community, and thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Freed would like to say something.
I just want to take a moment to thank Kim for her years of service. When I became the city manager here, I quickly realized the knowledgeable and talented department heads I had. And, Kim, your legacy will be the hundreds of moms and dads and families you've put into homes with your community rehabilitation and housing program. You've taken dangerous and blighted homes out of people's neighborhoods and made it safe for kids to walk home from school. And so, I mean, your legacy is seen in the people's lives every day, so I want to thank you for what you've taught me in the last year and a half since I've been here. The greatest challenge I've faced since being here is trying to find capable people to replace you and Bob, and I think we have that in David. And so I thank you for your years of service. I'm excited for David to take over. It'll be interesting. Learning curve for all of us.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Kim, I know you said you were born and raised here. Are you going to stay here, though, now that you're retired?
She stayed after college. Is she going to stay after she retired, huh?
Right.
Yes. Anybody else?
You're just jealous.
You're just jealous?
Yeah. Kim, I'd just like to say it's just been a pleasure. I know this is my second time around the council. When I first got here, about, what, about 10 years ago, you were there. I mean, and I didn't see anything that had gotten diluted about you. You were still going as strong. I mean, you practically helped build, it wasn't Bouchard, it was Kim Harmer to help build it, you know, put this city together. And you did it from the heart. You know, when I can go out there as a council member when I was campaigning, and they know you by your first name, that really made a difference to me. They didn't call you the city manager or the planning lady. They said, Ms. Harmer. So when somebody can do that, you know, from the north end to the south end, you have definitely made a difference. So may God bless you and keep you in good health, and, you know, come back, help David out. David gets short hay, say, I could help you out. So, really, I...
You only get four minutes.
You only get four minutes. Yeah, you only get four minutes now.
Do the last lap, yeah. But anyway, but thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one comment. I just have to compliment Kim for always answering the tough questions. Always. Never got it, never had to listen to anybody, her tell me that she'll have to look it up or whatever. She always had the answers to the tough questions.